Good evening.
Good evening.
So, a lot of excitement, a lot of energy, and we welcome it all. So, thank you. Good evening. You'd like to call this Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, regular meeting to order. And we're refreshing. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Westphal, please call the roll.
Carol Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew. Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Present.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Present.
Casey Yeager.
Present.
Entertain, please, a motion to, unless there's any additions to the agenda. Motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the regular agenda. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Before each meeting, we have a set of norms and protocols we'd like to read. They are as follows. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We agree to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. We agree to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. We agree to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. We agree to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. And we agree to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Faust.
Good evening. So, just a couple of updates. I had the opportunity of meeting last week with several superintendents from the KC Metro. That's something that we do. Usually it's about once a month or so, and we were meeting with Kaufman and talking about some of the things that we are looking for to do for our high school students as they're in here, and making sure that getting them ready for the next step. When talking with our superintendent's student council, those were some of the things that were somewhat fearful for them, what's next. And we want to make sure that not only are we preparing you to be successful in school, but we want to prepare students to be successful after high school, making sure that they know what their trajectory could be, not necessarily should be, but we should say what it could be, and giving you aspirations. So, speaking with those, it's around about forty, forty individuals, and almost in a think-tank situation, it was very powerful to sit and then talk about where we're going as a metro city, to get there and having the legs to be able to do it. I think that our future does look bright, and I know it's going to take some pushing and some pulling, and some more pushing and pulling, but we're going to get there. And, you know, I see the seniors that are here. Thank you. You know, next year, there will be a little more. Each year, we know that, I know you're thinking, well, why didn't that happen for us? You know, it'll happen. It'll happen. The great part is that we know that you'll come back and do some economic development for us. I was also on a panel last week with conscientious conversations, and we talked specifically around that, and it was, had the opportunity to sit down on a panel and speak about, of course, my wheelhouse was the education, then we had the DA there, and then there was another gentleman who was, his expertise was in economic development. And we were able to merge the systems and talk about what, what does it look like from the perspectives? And so, again, that was a great meeting, a great panel, a great opportunity to talk about what we need for our county, for our school district.
Thank you. And you will find out that our board is very active and love being involved in community affairs. Last week, had the opportunity, along with other board members and the superintendent, to attend the Junior ROTC Awards Program at Washington High School. Last night, happy to attend the K-State Step-Up Program of growing our own teachers. And today, at noon, was honored to attend the dedication of Quin Darryl Township as historical, as it receives its historical designation, and the opportunity, Dr. Faust, of our students, not only at Quin Darryl Elementary, that is there in the neighborhood, but our other students, as well as our community college students, to do research on the location of a port of entry, free state entry, in this historical movement of Kansas becoming a free state in the 1860s. So, very, very happy to attend, and there's a lot more activities for us to do likewise. Other comments?
Okay. I had the privilege of working with Bertram Carruthers Elementary School. They had a career fair, and I want to thank Dr. Faust, Dr. Nguyen, Ms. Jones, Ms. Humphries, our other administrative staff, and others who came out and supported them. It's a good thing. We want our young people to be exposed that either you're going to work for someone or work for yourself, you'll be an entrepreneur, and we were trying to promote that. And I thank all of you who took the time, and Mr. Gohean, your office as well. We had lawyers, we had Speedway, a little bit of everything and everyone, and the young people were very appreciative, and I do thank you for that. Also, Tuesday, on April 17th, we had a negotiation meeting with the teachers, and we're trying to work that out. So, hopefully, everything will work out, and we'll all be happy, and we're just one big happy family, and we want to keep it moving. Last night, I attended the K-State program, the grant that they put together to help us grow our own teachers. When I was young, they had an organization called Future Teachers of America. I don't know what they call it today, but we're going to have to go back to that, because, again, we have a diverse population, and we want our staff to be diverse, and sometimes we got to help put it together. So, if there's any young people out there who are interested, please, please, check with...
Callie Tushman.
Yeah. Cal, if you, I'm sorry. I'm looking at you, and I'm looking around the room. Forgive me. If you would talk with her, and if there's some way we can get them involved in the program. I was always told some of the best teachers in the world are in the second and third grade, because when I subbed and their teacher wasn't there, they let me know, this is not how we do this, ma'am. You have something to do. Did you not read the lesson plan? I said, yes, I did. It's been altered. So, I need to share with you, and you ladies are good, and you're going to help me make it through this day. So, we have some teachers out there. We just got to help them get it together. And I just want to encourage everyone also that gear up, and it's that all of our middle schools has a summer program. So, if you're looking for something for your young people to do, contact your middle school, if you have someone there, and ask them about the program at Gear Up, so you can get your young people involved. Because there's a lot. We often say, well, there's nothing to do. It is. We have to look for it. It's there. So, please look, and we can get them involved.
Well, it's been very busy the last few weeks. Ms. Brenda and I were very fortunate, being able to go to the band festival in Harmon High School, where we got to listen to all of our bands from our high schools compete. Then, on the Thursday night after that, if you missed this, our harp ensemble played at the Rainbow Mennonite Church. And, you know, people say harps belong to angels. Oh, it was like a church full of angels playing those harps, from elementary kids to our high schools. And if you've never heard our harp ensemble, look for information for it next year when they play, because it is tremendous. And we're about one of only 25 school districts in the United States that have a harp ensemble. There's been middle school track, softball. I have to brag on my granddaughter. She hit a home run last night that pushed in three other runs. So, I don't know what that's called, but there was four runs because she hit the ball. You know, sometimes you got to brag on your personal ones. But then, there's been high school girls soccer, and our girls are just phenomenal out there on the field. I don't know how they run back and forth so much, and they got that ball going, and before you know it, the ball's going the other direction. We went to the Saturday Academy Celebration, and I got to sit in on a psychology class at Schlegel High School. And I will say, in college, I really liked psychology and sociology, and we've got a teacher over there that makes it so interesting. It's just, it's wonderful to go sit in on those classes. The Junior ROTC Change of Command Program. The Carruthers Career Fair was really good. And then, you know, everyone knows I like music. New Chelsea Elementary presented the Lion King Junior at Wyandotte Auditorium last week. And those kids, their voices, they, they sound like professional singers. We have so much talent in our district, and the more arts programs and things that we have for our kids to participate in, the better. Then, we went to Early Childhood Center. This one class, every year in the spring, they have an obstacle course. The kids get to play on it, and it's crawling under a table, jumping off a chair, going through a tunnel. But it was in the hearing impaired classroom, and then in a regular classroom. Those kids were just having so much fun. I even got pictures of the teachers going through the tunnel. But we went to the morning and the afternoon of that. And then, we went to Morse Preschool yesterday. And I made it to all of our preschools in the fall, but what really resonated with me yesterday is I saw children that were having difficulties adapting to preschool in September. Their behavior and their learning is so changed by the time April comes around. I could not believe they were the same children. So, it just goes to show what a few months of good teaching, good peer support can do for our kids. And it just, like I said on Twitter, it's like, if you want to start a day that's cloudy and you want to feel good, go to one of our schools and sit in a class. You will come out feeling so optimistic about the future after watching our kids. It's just wonderful.
What she says. We also went to Douglas yesterday, too.
I would like to say I did attend the Saturday Academy. The workshops were great. They did research based upon black worms in water, sugar water. And the findings was very important, because every student had a perspective of what it meant to have sugar. Sugar, natural sugar, as well as artificial sugar compared to regular sugar. And based upon that, we know that children love their sweets and things of that nature, but they were able to take experiments and say, what effect would it have on my body? Some other students did cancer research. It was very good to see students being able to articulate the research they performed all year. And this research wasn't just, oh, let me go and see what studies have already been done to base my findings. They went out, they did research, they asked surveys, and they also were able to ask the community questions about their health and environment. As you guys know, we live in a redlined area. Kansas City, Kansas, is a redlined area, meaning that we have a food desert, there's not many places for exercise, there's very high carbohydrates and sugar due to the resources you have, if you can walk to locations to eat. So, the impact of the health in our community, it's very important for us to know, as well as our future generation. And it was really great to see them put it all together. The seniors did their own senior project and was able to present the information that they did their research on. I love that they were represented from all of our school districts, and they got a chance to share what they wanted to do for the future. And it's really important to know that many of our students are going to higher education via technical school that they've already started, as well as college credits, as well as many are getting internships this summer to go on to work a job with high pay. So, I encourage students, if you're a senior here, there are summer interns available. I send information that I give from the community to Eva Tucker-Nevils, so that she can send them out to the principals. But continually, organizations are asking for students in high school, juniors and seniors, for a paid position over the summer. So, if you are interested in working in a higher-paid position with more professionalism, there are opportunities available. So, talk to your career resource officer at your school, and do not be afraid to reach out. It's really good to see everybody here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Dr. Faust, now we are at the exciting part of our meeting. Recognizations and awards. For recognition of student Space Flight Experiments Program. Erin Henry.
I haven't been here before. I apologize. I don't know where to stand.
That's quite all right. It's an exciting time. And as you do what you're going to do, we will stand out, and we will have the opportunity to shake each hand as they come around.
Well, my name is Erin Morley. Legally, it's Henry, so that's what everybody has me as, but I go by Ms. Morley, as they know me. And these are our students. This is Unima Amayo. Dale Sean Sharkey. Carlos Jimenez Reyes. And Dequan Cheadle. And these are the winners of our Student Space Experiment Flight Program here in Kansas City, Kansas, an opportunity that was brought to us by KU Gear Up, which would not have been possible for the students, the middle school students of Kansas City, Kansas, without them. They truly, they were able to find this program and bring it to all of the middle schools here, to give us this amazing opportunity to compete for an experiment to be designed and here in middle school, and then performed on the International Space Station by actual astronauts. It was, all nine middle schools participated. There were three finalists, two of which were from Coronado. Very smart kids. And then, our team right here, the Cosmic Comets, were our winners. But again, this opportunity... This would not have been possible without KU Gear Up and all of their contributions to us here at Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Really, the hand of applause really needs to be given to KU Gear Up for letting us have this opportunity to begin with. They work in association with A Steam Village, a science program here in the Kansas City Metro area, so we were really grateful just to be a part of that. I am just so very proud of them. I told them from the beginning, though, that somebody from Coronado was going to win, and they did. Of course, they did. And I just, I'm going to, I would like, Unima, could you tell them a little bit about the experiment real quick? Yeah, you just, you could just talk. That's a microphone.
Okay. What do I say?
Tell them about the experiment.
What about the experiment?
Tell them what it is.
Oh, okay.
What is the experiment?
The experiment was to see if you could fit, like, a simple idea into a small tube and have it, and have the action carried out in the International Space Station. The idea we came up with was to see if leaves, mints seeds could grow better in microgravity or of regular gravity here on Earth. Yeah.
And so, they wrote an amazing research proposal, which was accepted and won the competition for all of Kansas City, Kansas, and in our Kansas City Metro area. And it will be leaving June, the, in the early parts of June, and it will be going to the International Space Station on July the 8th, and the boys will be presenting their research at the Smithsonian Museum of Air and Space in Washington, DC. And then, hopefully, funding is still up in the air, but hopefully, we will be able to then have them see this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have been invited by NASA to go see the rocket launch in Florida just a few days later. So, if we can manage to get the funding for that, they will be able to literally see there, something that they have put their hands on, designed, and put together, put onto a rocket ship, and flown into outer space. I'm incredibly proud of them. My principal, Paul Fregel, thank you, Paul, for all your help. Just one last thing. I would like to say, we've been, I loved the things that you were saying about bringing teachers in and trying to get them into our district on a lot of different levels. I'm a teaching fellow. I'm in my, thank you. I was a geologist and a former life. And I got the call for teaching, and I didn't have necessarily the steps to do that. And if it weren't for the Kansas City, Kansas Teaching Fellows Program, I would not have the opportunity to work with these amazing young people, and I would not have been able to have the experiences that I've had. And this district is so full of wonderful teachers that have been brought to us through the Teaching Fellows Program, and I really cannot say enough about that program and how wonderful it is, and what a great opportunity it is for me to be able to use the research that I did as a scientist to help them become maybe scientists. Unima wants to be a space lawyer. So, we'll see. And so, thank you very much for this honor. We very much appreciate it.
I've been asked to introduce Ms. Janet Wa as our next speaker.
Okay. Thank you. I just, as you all know, thank you for having me. As you all know, I never speak to what I'm supposed to say. I always go some other direction, and so, I'm going to go another direction. I had the privilege of going to Coronado with Teacher of the Year team, and I saw these kids, and it was fascinating. I was so impressed. And I'm hoping to have them at the, at our board meeting one of these days. So, I think that would be announced, you know, unbelievable things, but I am so very proud. There's so many wonderful things going on in this district and in this state, and we just need to tell more about it. We're kind of keeping things too private. They are not secrets, folks. You don't tell. Okay. My name's Janet Wa. For those of you who do not know me, I am a member of the State Board of Education. And I am here tonight to be able to honor and celebrate some more great success stories in our state, including the great successes taking place right here in KCK. Four years ago, as many of you know, in the fall of 2015, excuse me, the Kansas State Board of Education announced our new vision for Kansas. Kansas leads the world in the success of each student. And I want you to know, KCK is well on its way to doing this. We have a motto called "Kansans Can," and I say, KCK can and is. KCK is making a real difference for our most at-risk populations. Now, knowing firsthand, and I do know what happens in these schools, how much hard work and total commitment goes into that effort. And I am so extremely proud and pleased to honor eight schools in KCK with the 2018 Challenge Award. Now, the Challenge Award recognizes schools for outstanding achievement and uncommon accomplishment based on Kansas math and reading assessment results, graduation rates, chronic absenteeism rate, and the socioeconomic status of those taking the test. Now, to better align with the Kansas vision for education, the process for selecting schools was changed this year. Those of you that have been around in the past, in previous years, knows that these were given to just individual grade levels, and those other things I mentioned about graduation, absenteeism, and stuff were not taken into consideration. This year, we are adding those, because those are part of our vision, because test scores do not necessarily mean the success of a student. Yes, they're very important. We recognize that. But anyway, we do recognize that, but this year, we're not even giving them to, based on reading or math, where it's based on both, and we're not giving them to grade levels, we're giving them to buildings. So, anyway, before I go any further, I would like to thank the members of the Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force for their vision. They're the ones that created this award, and sixteen years ago, believe it or not, and they have continued to make sure that we get to come together every year to recognize the hard work of our teachers, administrators, and students. Many of you that have been on the board for a while remember going to Junction City or Salina for these awards. In the past couple of years, we've decided to come to the schools or to the boards, or we presented basketball games, at school assemblies. We've done everything, you know, so that more people can see the presentations and hear what is happening, because at these dinners, they were wonderful, and we enjoyed them, but only two or three people from each building could come. So, this is why we like doing it here. Now, in the sixteen years since this award was created, we have significantly, significantly improved the performance of Kansas students in reading and math. We've also narrowed the gap between ethnic groups and between our economically disadvantaged students and those who are not. But there is still work to be done. That's why we are counting on our Challenge Award-winning schools to continue pushing forward with the great work they've been doing, but to help us by sharing their success strategies with other schools here in the district and throughout the county and throughout the state, so that they can use some of these ideas. Because in my opinion, we, in education, we need to share. You know, it's not our secret. It's not secret. Let's don't keep it a secret. Secrets I don't like. And when we do something great, let's share it. Just like when we have these awards tonight, let's share them for everyone. But you know, Kansas is truly blessed with extraordinary educators and administrators whose leadership guides our students to achieve beyond what students themselves thought possible. And you know, I know about our staff here in KCK, and I know how hard each of them are working. And I know that on some days, it may feel kind of thankless, but I want each one of you to know, each of you, teachers, you principals, you administrators, you office people, you anybody working for the school district, the bus drivers, the secretaries, the custodians, all of you. the bus drivers, the secretaries, the custodians, all of you, every one of you are making a difference. And I want you to know that you have the, the, you have the gratitude of the State Board of Education and the Kansas Department of Education. And I want you to know one thing about it, you are making a difference. And I'm here tonight to show you what a difference you're making. Keep setting high expectations, keep providing the supports your students need, and keep believing that Kansans can lead the world in the success of each student. And as you do, know that you have the support and gratitude of everyone on the State Board and the State Department of Education. And I presented this award last night, yesterday, to Turner Elementary School. I have eight of them, I'm gonna present a few moments. And I told them in Turner, in my opinion, and I'm gonna tell you the same thing, because I didn't think of it till last night, so now I'm gonna start sharing it with everybody. I told them that I felt these educators that we have in our buildings are heroes. They are going above and beyond. In fact, they're not just heroes, they are superheroes. But there's only prob- one problem with it that they have with being a superhero. They just don't have one thing going for them. They don't have a cape. And I would appreciate it if the district still would start furnishing capes for our teachers, so they can know that they are superheroes. So at this time, I'm going to present these awards, and I would ask everyone to come forward, and I could present it, and then you could go and get, they will shake your hand in the front. And thank you so, so much for allowing me to be here. The first one I'm going to present will be Bethel Elementary. I'm going to read the first one, but they're all, they're all exactly the same. Bethel Elementary is awarded 2018 Certificate of Merit for Outstanding Achievement and Uncommon Accomplishment based on Kansas math and reading assessment results and other qualifying factors. Congratulations, we are so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
The next one will be Emerson Elementary. You were there, I remember. Now we will go to Frank Rushton Elementary. Wouldn't they look nice in capes? Mark Twain Elementary. McKinley Elementary. By the way, the, uh, I've been asking, and I thought told them they all said it would look good in capes, and I just remembered now they need to tell them what color they'd like. Okay. Whittier Elementary. William Allen White Elementary. Last, but certainly not least, Sumner Academy of Arts and Science. Thank you so much.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have the recognition of the Schlegel High School Capstone Project, and I think it's Dominic DeRosa.
Good evening, Board, I want to thank you for the opportunity. The Capstone Program at Schlegel is a new program, we just started this year. And we want to thank our illustrious administrators for allowing us this opportunity to do this program and trusted the teachers with this program. This is a chance for our students to pick a program and a project and work on it with mentors from the community and in the building to come up with a program. And I would like to recognize first off, the, some of the leaders, the teachers that helped run this. Uh, we have Edward Franco, LeShawn McGee, LeAnn Richardson. We also have a few that not here tonight, Marissa Worthy and Tabitha Borger. And as I said before, I've reminded again, we couldn't have done this without our leadership team and the other teachers at Schlegel that helped us all do this. But I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Franco, who was the spearhead of this, to talk to you some more.
Thank you, Don. So the Schlegel Capstone Project, uh, provides our students with the opportunity to create real solutions to real, uh, problems in our community. So throughout this process, our students collaborated with industry partners. They conducted research, they created real, authentic projects, and they presented it to live audience. So some of the, um, partnership that we forged throughout this process, so we partnered with United Way, uh, we also partnered with Sunflower House, Avenue of Life, um, KU Med, El Centro, and, uh, American Indian Council. So without further ado, uh, I'm giving the floor to our Capstone students.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Kong Pang, and I am a senior at FL Schlegel.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Sweetem, and I'm a junior at FL Schlegel High School.
Good mo- good evening, everyone, I'm a, um, my name is Nancy, and I'm a junior at Schlegel High School.
And for our group, our Capstone project was advertising for Avenue of Life. And so there's a significant amount of homeless teens in our community that are unfamiliar or do not know about Avenue of Life and the services that they can provide. And so our project, we created ads for Avenue of Life, specifically fi- flyers to promote Avenue of Life to teens at Wyandotte County. Also, for our, our other project, we also did collected donations for Avenue of Life.
Good evening, my name is William Taylor, I'm a senior at, at FL Schlegel.
Hi, my name is Naveya Brooks, and I'm a senior at FL Schlegel.
My name is Ariana, and I'm a, I'm a senior at FL Schlegel.
Our group was, um, designing the homeless shelter for FL Schlegel, or no, for homeless teenagers. Homeless teens are a significant portion of the homeless population in our county, and they should be aware of the programs that Avenue of Life offered to the community. This project provided designs for Avenue of Life's newly acquired shelter to create a teen-friendly environment to homeless teens in Wyandotte County. These designs in- included designing the physical spaces in the shelter as well as the program on how teens can avail, uh, of the services of the shelter.
Good evening, my name is Setlali Miki Ayicidro.
And my name is Von Boise, and I'm a senior at Schlegel High School. Our project is based on school culture and climate. We focus on just Schlegel High School. Um, this project aimed to provide a better understanding of the reason behind student tardiness as well as non-involvement in school activities. This research aimed to respond to the question, what can we do to encourage students to be on time and participate in school activities?
Good afternoon, I'm Mrs. McGee, I'm a teacher at FL Schlegel High School, and my, uh, students did not show up, so I'm gonna say what they did. Uh, we decided, they decided to tackle, um, abuse victims for targeted middle schools. There was, um, a lot of sexting and a lot of sexual activity that had been associated with middle schoolers, and so they wanted to put together a prevention for them so that they can understand that it's not just fun and games, it actually is dangerous for them to do that. They created a PSA as well as a familiar, funny cartoon that put out some things that were deemed to be okay, but really wasn't okay for their age group or inappropriate period. They did research, they talked to young students to see what it is that they like to do on their spare time, and the internet was one of the things that they did, and they started to research that. And then they worked with organizations within our community to help them come up with advertisement so that parents can go places to teach their children about safe internet use and sexual predators. Thank you.
Before we leave the podium, I'd like to invite each and every one of you to come to our Community Potluck. And this Community Potluck, we will be talking about various topics in the United States that could potentially harm us as a community. And, and within the Community Potluck, we will be just talking to senators and legislators, and there's also food to keep everyone happy. And so the Community Potluck will be on April 29th, which is this coming Monday, from five o'clock to seven o'clock. And I hope that everyone can attend, and I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
One other thing, this is just a small sampling of the group that did this. A lot of them, because they're involved in so many things, could not be here tonight. But this is a representative. So, well, thank you guys, and up there.
Yeah, two more, but I think everybody wants to sit down for a minute. That's what I'm hearing.
I'll, I'll give the name. Okay, let me read yours, because I can't, mine's not coming back. The next segment, we know that we have, um, our students identify their, uh, topic. So next is recognition of Sumner Academy of Arts and Science Full International Baccalaureate Diploma Candidates. Paula Bigger?
Good evening, my name is Paula Bigger, and I'm the International Baccalaureate Diploma Coordinator for Sumner Academy. On behalf of the administration and staff of Sumner, I'm very pleased to present to you this evening the twenty members of the class of 2019 who are candidates for the International Baccalaureate Diploma. The IB program is an international academically challenging two-year program for high school juniors and seniors. And this program is offered by over three thousand IB world schools in a hundred and forty countries. This year, a total of a hundred and ninety of our junior and senior students will sit for seven hundred and fifteen exams, starting in two weeks. However, these twenty of our twelfth graders have made the decision to take the most rigorous academic challenge of any high school student in the nation. We are confident that our students graduating from Sumner Academy and the IB program are well-prepared for the rigors of university courses. Each of these twelfth grade candidates has completed six or more college-level classes in the areas of English literature, Spanish, French or Spanish literature, the social sciences, the experimental sciences, mathematics, and the fine arts, as well as a cross-curricular course entitled Theory of Knowledge. All of the course wo- coursework will be internally and externally assessed according to international standards and strict criteria. Each student has also completed an in-depth four-thousand-word research project, excuse me, and a program of community service and self-development. Seven of these students will be eligible for the bilingual diploma, IB's most prestigious award. Not only have these students excelled academically, but they have also been active in co-curricular as well as extracurricular activities. They are leaders of Sumner Academy. Among this group, we have members of the soccer, football, swimming, bowling, debate and forensic teams, student council, National Honor Society, Spanish NHS, French NHS, and senior board members, as well as artists and musicians, making these individuals well-rounded, talented young leaders. We are grateful to the board for your continuing support of this outstanding academic program. It is now my pleasure to introduce you to the members of Sumner Academy's thirtieth graduating class of IB Diploma Candidates.
Hello, my name is H.L. Tao, and my extended essay is over the area of history. And my question is, how significant a role did Elizabeth Freeman on life play to the rise of her freedom in Massachusetts? And after high school, because I received the, um, Honeywell Scholarship, I decided to go to KCKCC or JCCC to study, uh, computer science, and thank you.
Hello, my name is Selena Gallegos. Uh, my subject area was English, my research question was, uh, in the giver, to what extent does Louis Lowry employ the usage of precise language to show a controlled society? And after high school, I plan to attend K-State University and study pre-vet.
Hello, my name is Clarisa, Clarisa Rincon. Um, my research question was in the area of psychology, and it was to what extent do social-cultural factors in, cause eating disorders? And I plan to attend Wichita State University in the fall to study biomedical engineering.
Hello, my name is Henry Madriles and my subject area was in English. And in "The Devil's Highway," a novel by Urea, how does Urea's treatment of the victims and perspective of the social aspects, coupled with his stylistic format of writing, shape the perspective over the subject of border crossing?
Hi, I'm Ariana Curio Madrigal and my EE was over English literature. And I did, to what extent does James Arlington Wright use human and nature relationships to portray aspects of isolation in his life? And I plan to go to K-State on the Edgerly Franklin Scholarship and study chemical engineering.
Hello, my name is Edgar Madrid. My extended essay was in Spanish, actually. So, my question was, so basically, if I try to translate that, it would be, to what extent does addiction and the expression of ideas of a person affect the points of views of the audience? And it was over Fidel Castro's speech at the United Nations Assembly, General Assembly. So I plan to attend Wichita State in the fall and study aerospace engineering.
My name is Rihanna Hernandez and my EE research topic was over French history. And my research question was, to what extent does Marie Antoinette's extravagant lifestyle influence French society and the royal family? I also plan to attend Wichita State University and study aerospace engineering. Thank you.
My name is Yareni Mota. My extended essay was in psychology and it was, in what ways does abuse and neglect impact child development? I will also be going to Kansas State University and majoring in psychology and minoring in social work.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Herr and I am the only student to do an extended essay over art. And my extended essay went over the success of art, in particular, Francisco de Goya's Saturn the Viper's Own Sun and Pablo Picasso's Guernica, and how do the four perspectives of art pertain to this? When I graduate, I plan to attend Kansas City Community College and then transfer onto K-State and I plan to major in computer science and finance.
Hello, my name is Anaya Singletary and similar to Richard, I was the only person to do a subject area of anthropology. And my, my research question was, how does the justice system negatively impact the black community? And I plan to go to Howard University in the fall with a biology major, but a pre-med track.
My name is Alvinho Alvarez Hernandez and my extended essay was over psychology. My question was, to what extent does divorce affect the academic success of adolescents in their high, middle school and high school ages? And I attend, I plan to attend KU and study chemical engineering.
Hi, my name is Bhikash Kalikot and my research was over muons to prove, my, my research question was, how do, how do muons provide evidence for a special relativity special relativity as proposed by Einstein back in the days? And I plan to attend KU with the KC Scholars and Heartlit Camp Scholars as well.
Hello, my name is Essence Reese. My EE was in history and my question was, to what extent did the Vietnam War draft affect America socially and economically? And I plan to attend Washburn and major in biology and minor in Spanish.
Hi, my name's Salma Ramirez and I did my EE in Spanish. My question was, so translated, that would be, in what ways do Latin American artists use diction and figurative language in their lyrics in order to create pathos and social commentary based off of immigration? And I'm gonna be going to Donnelly on the Presidential Scholarship and then I'm gonna transfer to University of St. Mary's, to become a nurse.
My name is Herman Castillo. My EE subject was over history and my question was, how did drug cartels and soccer affect Colombia in the 1990s? I plan to attend K-State and major in chemical engineering.
Hello, everybody, my name is Eric Traza Jr. And my subject area was sports, exercise, and health sciences. And my question was, to what extent does a, does the length of a pitcher's arm affect the velocity of the ball? And next fall, I hope to attend Roseholman Institute of Technology in Indiana and study chemical engineering.
My name is Ashley Bravo. My extended essay was in English and my research question was, how does Amy Tan's depiction of the daughter's upbringing demonstrate the mother-daughter relationships and how they were centralized by internal conflict? And I plan to go to University of Missouri-Kansas City and major in psychology.
Hello, my name is Raina Govan and my topic area was world religions. And my question was, to what extent does the concept, does the Buddhist concept of self account to their paths to Nirvana? And, what else did I, I plan to go to college and study actuarial science and business.
So next, we have a recognition from Sumner Academy of Arts and Science International Baccalaureate Career Certificate Candidates, Brian Delfosse.
Good evening. On behalf of the administration and staff of Sumner Academy, I am pleased to present you the inaugural class of the 2019 Candidates for the International Baccalaureate Career Certificate. Mr. Edward Gunter, the IB Career Coordinator, personal professional skills teachers have spent countless hours guiding, counseling, and coaching and supporting this group of young people as our very first cohort of career candidates. The IB Career Certificate Program is international academically challenging multi-year program for these students. The program is offered by 220 IB World Schools and only 107 in the United States. This year, these students will have completed three or more college-level classes, a series of career-related study courses, a two-year personal and professional skills course, 50 hours of service learning, and 50 hours of language development. Each student has also completed a capstone reflective project of 1,500 words and a presentation of an ethical dilemma in architecture. I am so proud of these four young men that will be remembered for becoming Sumner Academy's very first International Baccalaureate Career Program Certificate Candidates. Next year, we'll have about 50. It is now my pleasure to introduce you to the members of the Sumner's first graduating class of the IBCP Candidates.
Hello, my name is Michael. I am a senior at Sumner Academy and my project was over classroom construction and the advice that architects should take into play when they consider what the classroom is being constructed for. I am going to UMKC to study civil engineering in hopes of achieving a position at Whiting and Turner, a local engineering firm.
Good evening, my name is Rob Marquez and I attend the Sumner Academy of Arts and Science. I, my reflective project was revolving around the ethical dilemma of how green spaces are not only being damaged but chipped away by construction and infrastructure. And as far as where I want to study, I'm most likely gonna go to KC KCC for two years to study automotive technology, since I got a full ride there, and transfer out to K-State to continue studying automotive technology and business because I one day want to open my own business. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Readevi Conde Dominguez. I'm also a senior at the Sumner Academy of Arts and Sciences. My reflective project was surrounded around the lack of renewable resources used in the development of urban cities and how that has created urban heat islands and how those could be manipulated to lower carbon emissions. My, I'm hoping to go to JCC to study graphic design and soon, and hopefully soon, going into artistry.
Hello, my name is Juan Ponce and my reflective project was about, how do we improve underdeveloped communities without displacing the current residents? And I plan to go to Kansas State University to study mechanical engineering.
I have one lady rival who is playing soccer, as you can see, she's one of our soccer stars, so she'll just introduce herself.
My name is Morgan Dirks. My extended essay was, to what extent do the cognitive effects of adrenaline enhance athletic performance? And my college plans, I'm gonna play soccer for Missouri Valley College. And study exercise science.
Community comments next.
Well, while the parents and teachers and students have left, we still want to congratulate them all and wish more and more and more. Ms. Westfall, is anyone for the community comment section?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Number five, updates. Mr. Covington, bond update. Good evening.
Good evening. The constructions at all our schools are continuing. We've had some great weather lately and we're gonna have the JE Dunn continue to bring you up to date on where we are and, and then construction.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Schlick with JE Dunn, good to see you guys again. Just got an update on the overall bond budget. I believe the information was included in your packet. Not a lot of updates since the last time we've met as no additional construction dollars have been contracted. All the projects that have been designed are fully contracted and many of them under construction. But we have had some pretty good updates on the soft cost side, mainly with a lot of the projects under construction that have been contracted. We've had a reconciliation with the, with the design teams and they've been able to finalize a lot of their fees for those particular projects and have realized some additional savings there. So as you can see at the bottom, I think last time, our current total savings for the overall bond was around 1.2 million. Now it's 1.7 million dollars. And a lot of that is, is due to the reconciled design fees or finalized design fees from, from the construction projects. An additional change is a lot of the furniture for the buildings that are either completed or under construction has been procured or went out and contracted for. And there was some additional savings that was realized for the furniture piece as well. So those are the two, two major, little bit of change in the, the last line item there, the GMP savings and overage. Is really, that's just tracking contingency savings or overages through the projects. And the good news is, is all the projects that have completed to date, we've, we've returned some contingencies, but those are running pretty close to where the original contracts were. So overall, all good news and as we continue the design of the last few packages for, for the bond. Any questions?
Questions, please. Comments? Please proceed.
Hi, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Faust Ford, Lee Moore, JE Dunn, good to see you guys. I'm gonna give you a quick update on five of our current projects under construction. So, this first one, lots of good pictures here, this is Wellborn Elementary School. So, we are in the final stages of wrapping that, the building part of that project up. We're about 85% complete with the architect punch list. You can see there, most spaces look finished, there's furniture going in. My understanding is that your furniture installation is about 75% complete, it should be 100% complete by end of the week. And we are planning an owner move-in 1st of June. So, the building won't be necessarily occupiable because we still have a bunch of site work to do. But we are looking in really good shape on the building.
When do we get to do a walkthrough?
Whenever.
I'd love to come see our new building.
So it's, it's safe and ready to look at, so.
Dr. Covington, you'll set that up first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Okay, so the second project is Rosedale Middle School, we're doing a kitchen and, I'm sorry, you had a different one up. So Rosedale, so we're doing a gym and, I'm sorry, not a gym, a kitchen and cafeteria addition. And then we've got some administrative, administration area at work going. So at that school, in the administration area, we're in the painting process. So that one's coming along pretty well. In the kitchen and cafeteria, we've got the kitchen painted. We're looking to start flooring in the kitchen mid-May and then kitchen equipment will be showing up late May for Rosedale, so. And then you'll start seeing some site work happening here pretty soon. And the building is pretty well-enclosed with windows and brick on the building, so.
Did the cafeteria stay up on the third or fourth floor?
That will be renovated into some classroom space, some career exploration space. So, once school's out, get all the kitchen equipment out there and remodel that part of the building. So next up is Carl B. This has been the project that has been mostly, most affected by weather. We're not anticipating impacting the move-in in 2020, but we do have weather delays that we're working to overcome. So, we do have some exciting news, we're starting our, we have been able to get the majority of dirt work done. Again, all you're seeing is dirt on the, on the pictures. But our Ramd Aggregate Pier Contractor will show up next week and 1st of May, we'll be mobilizing the concrete sub to start footings and foundations for that project. We're also hoping by the end of May, you'll see the gym pre-cast going up. So we will start to see a little bit of a building here, hopefully before summer. Gloria Willis is the new middle school on the Coronado site. Wrapping up finishes there, as you can see in the picture, the gym's coming together. They should have the bleachers wrapped up this week in the gym. And we're starting, we'll be starting the architectural punch list process mid-May. We've already started our internal punch list, you can see. A lot of the classrooms are looking in pretty good shape. We're working our way out of those classrooms into the hallways. And we're looking at 1st of June for building turnover for that building as well. Similar situation to Wellborn, we still have a significant amount of site work to do around that building. But the plan is, is to move from Coronado to the new building once school's out. And I believe the last one to talk about is John Fisk, so that is our gym, kitchen, and two classroom addition. So what you see there is we've got the pre-cast up, that green stuff is your foam insulation on the That green stuff is your foam insulation on the exterior walls. So we've got the, pretty much the building is enclosed. We're getting windows in. The roof is complete. We've set RTU units, so that's our mechanical equipment, so we can start conditioning the space. And we're looking to, by mid-May, we should be in the painting and ceiling business in that addition, so. And we do have some work around the site to do this summer and some renovation work inside. And then we've got another 10 buildings we're gonna be touching this summer. We're still in the pre-planning stages of those, procuring materials, and looking pretty good to get those started 1st of the summer, so. Any questions?
Yeah. What is the status of 8833 Waverly? That's, you know, the property where we're gonna build the school? 88, I think it's 8833.
Rooney. Rooney.
Rooney.
Rooney Elementary. Rooney.
So we have started some construction, some earthwork there. We're in the early stages of getting earthwork going and trees down.
Okay.
So we have started grading on that project.
Okay, there were a couple of wells on the property. Were they closed, officially closed?
I am aware of the wells. There is a process we have to follow to fill those, and so that is underway.
Underway, meaning?
I don't know the exact status of it, but there is, that is part of the project to get completed. So that will be part of the earthwork operation. It may be done. I apologize, I don't have the exact answer on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So if there's any environmental concerns, you will bring it back to us to, how about just make a point to bring it back to us, so we don't have to ask this again?
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing. You know, once those wells are closed, when you come back, would you bring the closure reports for those wells?
Okay. Sure thing.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Our fabulous communication team has gone out and made an update on our website for all the bond projects, and we're gonna play that for you now.
For more updates, please visit bond.kckps.org.
And I will set up that walkthrough for Wellborn and Willis and get on you all's calendar. We're doing both on the same day. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question for you. On the, what do we do with the savings? On the overages? What do we do with that money?
There is not a plan right now, but we will put together something to bring back to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would suggest we start looking at something solar, because with the utility bills off the chart.
We would take that on the advice.
Other questions, comments? Thank you. Vacancy report, Kelly Tuschman, Chief of Human Resources.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm gonna have Cynthia Fokes come up and talk about the latest vacancy report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Wayne, Dr. Faust, and board members.
Evening.
For our recruitment summary, April 2019, the vacancy report is as follows. Those vacancies that are verified by authorization to fill form request is what you see before you tonight. We have 59 general education vacancies, as well as 30 special education vacancies. One of the important things to understand, at least to this point, is that of the 136 resignations, 101 of those are teachers. So when you look at the conditional offers that we have of individuals who have signed on that they would come and be teachers in our school district, along with the 21 fellows teachers, that represents about 71 individuals out of the current 89 vacancies that we have right now. We have been at career fairs for the past several months, but I believe it was your desire to know what was upcoming. And so this particular slide just shows some of those things that we're still involved in, in terms of teachers, those who may also attend classified job fairs that we will be putting on here at the school district, as well as, last but not least, the plans that we're already making for June 1st through July 15th, to capture not only classified job openings and vacancies, but the fact that we will be hosting them not only at the central office, but we will be going out to our public libraries so that we can get more out into the community, and those individuals can come in and see what's going on, take advantage of the computers there at the library, and if need be, have some assistance for applications. This is the report for April.
Questions?
I see you're going to the West Library, but is there a way that you could do something in town as well?
We do plan to. We just secured the dates for the West Library, and so the main library, the library out in the Argentine area, there were four last year that we included in our summer plan to get to. And as soon as all of those dates are confirmed for the other ones, then I will make sure that there's a list for everyone to see.
And second question, is it possible to get a time slot? You've given the place and the date, and we're trying to tell people too about it, to encourage them to apply. So is it possible to get some time slots with that as well?
Yes. The marketing team is working on all of the flyers with those times, the dates, where to call to get their RSVP and their appointments, and as a walk-in, we'll take walk-ins as well without appointments.
Okay. And then I just have a comment, because I'm gonna keep saying this. We have a diverse population, our student body. Our faculty should reflect that. And I don't mean to beat a horse to death, but they need to see it. Children need to see themselves. I can't plead, and I understand the difficulty, but whatever we can do, we gotta do all that we can do to show, and we're really sincere about this, that there is diversity, and they need to see themselves. So I plead, I beg, let's do all we can. I wanna help. I'm telling anybody and everybody I can see who's qualified. I'm not just saying, let's go take the bus into the park, pick up some people. No, we want them qualified. We wanna make sure that they can do the job, and they have children's interests at heart. And that's the key. So please, diversity is important.
And I will say, we are looking, I mean, it is, we've put our feelers out, and so we're telling everyone, if you know of anyone who is bilingual, who looks like our students, and they are eligible to teach, we will bring them in for interviews. It's not that we're, it's honestly, it is, it's hard to find individuals. And it's, again, I keep telling all of us that it's just not Kansas City, Kansas who's looking for teachers. It's across the country. So we are, we are doing that. And, I mean, the push, they know that what the push is, what I've asked them to do. But remember, you're just seeing from April to June.
Right.
And so the ones prior to that, there are some others, but it is, they are out there. They've gone to places where, of course, are the HBCUs, they've gone to where Spanish speakers, so those are out there. These are at the end of the term. So we have those individuals inside those 79 that are being hired. And so our push is there, and honestly, it's, when you talk to the metro superintendents, we're all looking for the same type of candidate. And so it's, I mean, we are, we are, we're competitive out there. And that's one of the great things, is that we're competitive with it, but it is a, it's a task.
Okay. I just said that because we're getting hit.
Right.
By parents who are hitting us every day. What are y'all doing? What's going on? Why can't you do this? And we gotta have some answers. We wanna, you know, not to say, you're not trying, but I just wanna remind, we gotta keep it in our heads to know that we gotta come and do all that we can. And we're trying to tell people, and you're telling people, and we just gotta keep putting it out there, and to let the public know that we're trying. Because when you look at the end result, it doesn't look pretty. But we wanna make sure that we're doing all that we can.
And to piggyback on that same note, again, first, thank you for everything you are doing. Secondly, what, and you would have to probably come back and give us that date again, you know, between January and March, what did you do locally recruiting? Because it's late. It's late, and I, and I've said it before, and I will kill a dead horse, that the goodwill has not been in the community, as far as receiving, let's say, with the reception, with the perception, that there's an interest in hiring qualified from Kansas City, Kansas, who may be teaching in Kansas, Missouri, may not be, but the legacy, the past record has not been good. And you've heard that before, and you know that, because you, this is not your first year here. Perhaps some of your, the newer people can, do not have the history, but we all know the, the lack of promoting from within. We have lost many young, progressive, qualified leaders to other districts because they were not promoted here. I haven't told, hold, told her, but I'll use an example. Mrs. Brownlee Page, Mrs. Drew, were 30 years, never promoted to principal, not because they weren't the best there, but that, the politics of the area. I'll even pick on Dr. Jaeger here, and you've had that conversation, we've had this conversation that, not even getting the interview. So, so I guess I have two questions. One is, have we, have we addressed some of those cogs in the system that were identified as obstacles? And I, and we'll find out, I guess, because we'll get the reports. But number two, what is the, well, first, let me give you a chance to answer that one before I go on. The cogs that Vicky Harris identified.
I'll answer it. I'm not sure what we're talking about.
That's what I said, the cogs that Vicky Harris, from her report, identified in the system, some of the cogs, some of the obstacles in the system. That's something we need to probably talk about later with you, Dr. Faust.
And so I'll tell you, I don't know, I haven't presented anything to them, so I don't know.
Well, Ms. Foles, no, because she was, this was two years ago, and are you saying you don't remember?
The information from the first.
The Vicky Harris report, now if, it's, you know what?
And so we have.
It's perfect, it's okay to have memory gaps? So we may have to revisit that?
It would be great to revisit it based on the specifics that you're talking about.
Okay.
So that I can address that directly.
Address it. That would be the best thing, and thank you for that. And number two then, so what's the protocol to, if an opening is posted, identified, how long is it open?
That varies on the actual position. We do have best practices where it can be open for more than 10 days. Sometimes that can go up to two months if we're looking for a chemistry, physics, or a specialized type of endorsement and license for an individual.
So we don't have a policy?
It's 10 days.
I'll say, Greg, do we have a policy on positions, time, open?
I don't know that we, I don't know that we have a specific policy on how, I guess I'm, I know that some positions are open till they're filled, so that's my hesitation. But if we have a position that's open and advertised, I think we've got goals in terms of when to fill it by.
Yes.
But I'm not sure we have a policy that says you have to have it filled by a date certain, unless there's some sort of statute.
Or that you have to leave it open. I mean, we've had reports from the community who says that a position has been posted on Thursday and closes by Monday. And of course, we're quick to say, that can't be, but we don't, we don't, if we don't have a standard, a minimum, then that may be something too that at least we have to investigate.
I don't know, I don't recall of that happening since I've been superintendent of.
I'd say, we're reported.
That's what I'm saying. I'm honestly telling you, that has not happened. I know we have a report every week on Mondays when, but that has not been a, we've not done that. And so one of the things that I would ask is that, when those are given, if you'll just shoot us an email, because everything that someone says is not always the gospel. And I get it, people want to be hired, but there is a qualification that they have to have, that we wanna make sure that we're following protocol. The goal was that we clean it up and make sure. So there will be tighter systems. So that means that individuals may not get the opportunity to interview for the position just because it was open. We don't interview everyone. Once you go through it, there's another checklist that they go through to get the position out there. So we do, we're following all of the policies. We look at it, we make sure, but I don't know of any time where we placed a position since I've been superintendent, where we've opened it on Monday and closed it on Tuesday.
No, I didn't say that. Opened it Thursday and closed it on Monday.
But I, I mean, same, that's, we've not, because we don't work on Saturday and Friday, so I, I'm just saying that under my leadership, that has not happened. And I would ask that the board gives us the opportunity, if that is happening, that you notify us, and then we can look into it.
Good. Because the laser version, and you all know, we all know, Kansas City, Kansas is this big, and that either someone's related, former student, or something, and, and bad news always travels fast. But, but at no time are we suggesting not to hire the most qualified, effective people. And so that, that is out of the discussion. And it's almost an insult to, to my intelligence to even bring that into the discussion, but that many times, we know that, that March and April timeframe for people who are teaching, you have to know whether you're gonna apply someplace else and give them that notice. So this Jan, this, this June, July, most of the people, as even we heard from the report of the, of the young person hired, by that time, those who haven't been hired, it's, it's tough.
Well, we strive, well, we strive to get them hired before then, but we will always, unfortunately, because even when we offer to people, they don't necessarily wanna take our offers too. So, you know, so we're always gonna have probably a few. We, we're definitely trying not to have anybody hired at that time, because that is, you know, not the best time to be hiring people.
But the ones that report to us, the ones that are looking to have KC KPS the first choice.
Yeah.
You know, those who want to come back, those who hear their openings and look for the application, and it's not there. And so that lack of communication that we have is a challenge, and I think that is probably something that we could improve upon.
Yeah, just, just let us know. I mean, that's probably the best way to deal with it. We know what it is.
And it's a two-way street.
Do our best, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna thank you for giving an updated report. I appreciate you sharing with us where you've gone and the report about how many people you're seeing. And the only issue, Dr. Faust, that I did have was the culture of not giving fair interviews to African-Americans of the higher positions that we have openings, in which, meaning that one person may be in that interview, rather than giving other people an opportunity to weigh on that information. Anytime I have gone across that situation or someone reported to me, I've reported straight to your HR administration team, so I did not involve you in those situations. But that's just something from the. But that's just something from the community that was said. And again, I forwarded it on to the hiring people as to, for them to look into and give their opinion about it and reach out to the person, rather than for me to get involved in the direct process.
When's the drop dead date for the teachers to give their resignation?
May 30th.
May 30th?
All certified.
All certified, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, where's the? Through here, okay. Okay. So I have a little report, not a little report, I've got a report on a three-year trend on who we have, who's termed and who has been hired, as far as various grouping. So we'll look at it. It's a lot of data, and I'm gonna try to make it as easy as possible to look at. I wanna say thank you to my team, and also to the IT department, because we could not have done this without them. This is a lot of data to go through, and we're trying to learn from our data. That is a theme that we have in Human Resources, to really try to understand what has been going on, and also then to think about how we might change things going forward. So, so certified separations. This report is showing based on years of service. Okay, so this is certified staff only. And so you'll see the blue is 2016, 2017. Orange is 2017, 2018. And then the yellow is 2018, 2019. Okay, so what this really shows you, in a nutshell, is that most of our terminations, or our separations, I should say, happen within the first five years. Okay, and that's a theme that we've talked about before. And so if you just add the, do the math there, 2016, for example, we had 59% of our turnover was in the first five years. And then 17 was 67%. And then so far in 18, 55%. So we are still getting resignations today, so that number will go up some more. Okay? Then we'll go on the next page, and this is classified staff, the same thing. Basically, same type of information. Again, you can see on the classified staff, it's the same, same thing. Most, all of our terminations are, or separations are in the first five years. Okay? If you have any questions, just stop me. And then this, go ahead.
I do have a question. One of the feedback I got from someone who was in their first year is the pay structure. I guess there's a nine or 12-year payout that they have an option to take, or?
I'm not, I'm not sure, is it a classified or certified, or?
Classified. Is there, are there different payouts that you have, that's a little different than maybe industry payouts?
Well, there's different tables. So classified staff have different tables as well, that we place them on. So, and maybe they're talking about where they were placed on the table, perhaps?
Okay.
I don't know, I mean, without more information.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but we do have different pay scales for different positions.
Right, I just, I just heard that it was a, that when people come to work for our district, it looks different. The paycheck or something looks different. I'll get more information on that, though.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have. And then this is just all staff, so this is basically, again, this is just a summary graph, chart, that just, again, shows that all of our separations are in the first five years. And then, if we look here at this chart, this is, we just split this up to kinda see or show. So of our certified separations, you see that most, all of our separations are, again, resignations. And then we have some retirements, and that's what we show, and then non-renewal. Now, one thing I will say is that our non-renewals may start out to be more, but people have the option to resign. So what you will see is that this resignation piece right here will be higher, because we gave people the option to resign instead of being non-renewed. Does that make sense?
Instead of, you said, you give them the option of what?
Of to resign instead of being non-renewed. Okay, so that's just a question for them, you know, how they wanna handle that. And the same thing for classified. It shows just, again, most of our separations are gonna be from resignations. We have had some retirements, and then, you know, in the worst-case scenario, when we have to term somebody. So that just shows you the three years. But most of the people that leave are leaving, you know, because they want to resign. Okay? And this is just a summary of those two pieces of information. Then we've put some demographics in here. So when we look at where are we, again, this is certified staff. So when we look at those people who are separating in the certified staff, this is by ethnicity. So what you do see is that we have a higher percentage of Caucasian versus other groups. And that, again, is by year, so 16, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19. And that's also very likely because of the fact that we have more Caucasian teachers than we have other, other classifications. And then the same thing on the classified side, this is by ethnicity. So, again, what you see here is a little bit more even, because we do have, you know, more diversity here in our classified staff. So as you can see, we have 45% African-American, 41% Caucasian, 12% Hispanic. So that's how we broke it out, just to, again, see what our data's telling us. And then this is all staff separations by ethnicity. Now we go on to new hires. So this is, again, what percentage of the people that we're hiring in any given year is certified versus classified versus administrator versus, you see this big jump right here, substitutes? So in 18, 19, we had 30% of our hires, which is 30% of 1206, that's how you, just to do the math there, were certified, and 38% were classified. And then we had 31% substitute. Okay, so the thing to remember about this, the substitutes are really classified employees, they're not certified employees. So when I show you the next charts, I just want you to be aware of that, because you'll see a big jump in the, the numbers there. Okay, so, maybe not this chart, but, and then the certified new hires by ethnicity, the same thing. You, you know, we're making small gains, but we are making some gains in other areas of our certified staff. We're hoping, again, this year, we'll have some stronger numbers, because we have definitely, I mean, what Cynthia's been talking about, the places we're trying to go, the recruiting that we're doing, we hope that this will show up in our numbers for certified staff. And then the same thing with classified. This is just showing you, again, what our percentages are. And here's where I was pointing out, in 2018, 2019, you can see that we have a little asterisk here. 370 of the new hires were subs. Okay, so that's a reflection, I think, of the decision you guys made when you went to Morg, got away from Morgan Hunter, and we brought subs into our district. These are 370 new subs to our district in the 18, 19 year. And they're reflected, I think, we're having a higher percentage of diverse candidates in that particular area as well. And this is just an average of all the all-staff, I guess that's it. So, do you have any questions from this? I, I'm happy, we'll keep trying to produce more and different information, so we can just keep everybody informed as to how we're doing with our separations and our recruiting. And obviously, our goal is to keep good, talented people always, and always to attract good, talented people. So, any questions?
Yeah, okay, you collected the data.
Uh huh.
Okay, now, is somebody gonna come back and look at this and make some observations and say some things? You know, I didn't see that, I didn't know if you've done it yet. Right now, you collected the data. So will there be a group, or your department-
Yes.
-look at it and say?
Daily. That's how I approach this. We approach data daily, and that, I'm being a little bit glib, but reality is, this is stuff, this is what I've been trying to put in place with my team here, is that we look at data all the time, and this is just part of the data that we're collecting. We collect a lot of data on any number of things that we do in Human Resources. But one of the things that we will do, for example, when we are done with all the hiring for 18, 19, we wanna learn from that. We wanna see, and like you say, maybe adjust where we're going, what we're doing, what can we do different? We just, you know, I, I don't think it's anybody's to blame, we just haven't used the data, perhaps, in the past like we should have. And it's not easy to get at. I mean, I'm just gonna be honest, this has been good work. We are working with our IT department, they've been very helpful to help us get this data in a format that we can create these charts. And it's, and we also have to do a better job of how we collect data.
Because, back to what Ms. Jaeger alluded to, when you see that first, you know, first five years, it's a new generation. Some of us are old heads. We stayed, we were orientated that we worked for 30 years and we retire. That no longer exists. And if they're leaving within the first five, to me, it says, we need to begin to do something. Something's wrong. When you look at the first five, and then if you look at the pay scale on the end, you're losing a lot of people because of the pay, because they know the first five years are competitive. And then the latter part, and I admire the young people today, they did what we didn't do, it was just our orientation. They leave, they don't stay.
Well-
So if that's the trend, then we gotta begin to rethink some things. That's why I didn't know if you were gonna look at all of that-
Yes, we will.
-and then bring some things back.
Well, one of the, the main purpose for them to do this is because in the couple of board meetings, they were saying that the resignations were high. So this was to dispel that belief that the resignations are actually not high, they're actually lower. So that was the sole purpose here. But of course, coming out of that, we did find that, you know, what the hiring process looked like and where we were going. But that was the sole purpose, to say that our resignations around this year, actually, were lower than what we've been in the past three years. And so when people say, oh, well, they're leaving the district, they're leaving the district, the data does not prove that. So that's what the sole purpose here. But yes, those can, those conversations are actually always continuing, and Kelly and I have had that conversation over, what are we doing to actually recruit specific individuals to actually fulfill, so that we can, we may not bid a 50, 50, or a 40, 40, 40, but how do we increase the, the hiring process for our underserved? Will our majority, our majority of our students, that population?
And one of the things I think Stacy had asked for last time, and I can present that probably in one of the next board meetings, but we also need to understand why people leave, it's not always pay. And so we need to learn from that data also, and that comes through the exit surveys. So that's other information that we are trying to gather also, and being very diligent to try to get that information from people when they leave. So we learn from that also.
And I wanna say, I appreciate the data. We've asked for data previously, had not gotten this, but I love numbers, and I love knowing.
Yeah.
Because instead of guessing, or wondering, or assuming, as Dr. Faust had mentioned, if we don't have the data and numbers, or know how to analyze them, then we're doing ourselves a disservice. So I know you've not even been here a year, yay.
Oh, no, no. Four months, five months.
Right, four or five months, but I appreciate you providing us with the data and information that we are continually asking for numbers and looking at and seeing how we can improve. Because the importance of knowing this is to see how we can improve the policies. How can we improve and help you and work together, so that everything is aligning to what our ultimate goal is? And that is to help educate our children to the best of our ability and to be the top 10, one of the top 10 schools in Kansas. So I really appreciate this information.
Thank you.
I got a question. You know, how effective is the exit, any interviewing process? I mean, are you seeing any trends in, in the kind of information you're getting from those interviews?
I would, I would be, I would just be guessing if I was saying what that is. I, I can tell you, we are looking at the process right now. We haven't had great success in getting data back, and that is not unusual. I can tell you, being a human resource for a long time, that when people are done, they don't always, you know, give you information. Okay? But we are doing more to try to get to that data. Like, let's not just settle for one phone call to try to get it, let's try to get that information through their email, text them. Whatever we need to do, but let's be tenacious to try to get it. And so that is what we're doing. So we hope that through our processes, and getting that information from them sooner, too. Because, you know, a lot of times when people are leaving, they're not thinking about coming in and doing an exit interview with you. So we're, we're working on various ways to get the data, so we have more of it to share. Because it's a low percentage right now that we actually do receive back. And most of the information, if I would give it to you, would be anecdotal, I mean, just stories that people have said, so I don't wanna go there. I'd rather have-
Do you wait until they leave?
Well, right, I mean, what you do when somebody's leaving, and let's say they give you a couple of weeks' notice, which is typical, or if it's, if it's a classified staff, if it's certified, they'll give you a little bit longer, because they're gonna finish out a school year, or whatever, perhaps. Yeah, we're, we're trying to get earlier on that process, so that we're not waiting until the last minute for them to give us that data, when maybe their email account's no longer valid. So, you know, these are things that we just have to improve. Make sense? Okay, any other questions?
Just refresh my, our memory, please. For a community that has no real newspaper, how are we getting the word out? I mean, what, what avenues, what outlets we're using?
Are you talking about for-
Advertisement of openings.
Well, okay, so our website would be one of those ways, because we have a link right there, and the new website is wonderful.
Yeah.
I think it's a nice improvement. So it's there. And I, I really would stress to people you talk to, what they need to do when they go into that job posting site, there's a place right there where it says, would you like to continue to get notices of job postings? I still receive it. I get it, when I, you know, applied here, I put that button, I pushed that button, I still get it on my personal email account. So I know it works, okay? So they, that's how they, that's one way, that they can always stay informed of new positions. And then the other ways are the flyers and marketing materials that we would be using, the marketing department to help us put out there. And we have, I know that Melissa's done several things, the movie theater ads, the billboards, the, you know, and then the advertisement of the career fairs.
None of our local newspapers? I mean, the, those Mundos, the Call, we're not using those, the Star?
Melissa's here, I don't-
I'll come back up and answer some of that.
There you go, Cynthia.
We have radio spots that play at various times, depending on what the event is. We, as she just mentioned, we were very excited that we have been at some of the openings for some of the movie theaters this year. And we are excited because we have a number of impressions that are coming back from that. We are also nationally within four to five different organizations, which includes hbcu.com, includes Omega, which is Hispanic, that provides us, an opening that provides us print, as well as radio, as well as TV. And so there are, that is just among some of the things that we're doing. From a social media standpoint, everything from Indeed picks us up, to LinkedIn, to Simply Hired, through the website. We are also on KSDE, Kansas State Department of Education, all of their teacher boards, superintendent boards for leadership positions. We are also on the, with several of the Chamber of Commerce, both locally, as well as in a five-state region. So all of that contains additional information in addition to wherever we go for business events and for campus events. Some of those events allows us to have marketing materials left throughout that city and that state after we have visited, as part of the registration fee. And so, once we leave those events, there's continuation of those job postings in those particular- And so, once we leave those events, there's continuation of those job postings in those particular states.
Again, we congratulate you. But none in the Kansas City Call, the Dos Mundos and the Star?
We've used Dos Mundos. This year, we have not used the Star. In terms of the high rate of fee, we've been able to divide that more in a variety of different places where we get a higher diverse population that actually has been shown through marketing materials and vehicles that the marketing and communications department has provided for us. So they could certainly give more information about that.
Current media is very expensive, but the Kansas City Call as well, the Globe?
We have not done anything over the past six months with the Call. We had a number of those, or we had a couple of those advertisements that did go out into it prior to that.
We can check with Melissa and see. I mean, I don't have any perspective.
That's a local newspaper. That was a newspaper that we use, yes.
Thank you. That speaks volumes.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
No, but we can see you some recommendations of newspapers, if you would like, so you could be more comfortable with the culture of the local community. Because you may not know of the papers that they give out free at church and other avenues.
Community Voice.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be happy.
Yes, Globe and all.
Yeah, we can share some of those, though, so you can know about them.
That would be great, for the additional ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or to the superintendent?
Who asks that the Kansas City Board of Education approve a resolution to close Parker Elementary School at the end of the 2018-2019 school year?
Any questions?
So who?
Second. Been moved in second to approve closure of, as I get back here, Parker? Discussion? Approve a resolution. That was the?
And there is a formal written resolution that you guys have to sign once you voted on it.
Okay. That's all you need is a motion to approve.
You can just do a motion to approve the resolution. It just, once it's passed, before you leave tonight, you need to make sure everybody signs it.
Just did.
It's attached and then it's in your signature folder there.
Okay. Been moved in second. That's all you need is approval, correct?
That's correct.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. Item B?
That the Kansas City Board of Education approve the local education agency assurances and opt-in to coordinate with the National Instructional Material Accessibility Center as submitted by Allen King, interim assistant superintendent, Dr. Michelle Coven, director of special education, and as recommended by myself, superintendent of schools.
Good evening, Dr. Faust, Madam President, board members.
Evening.
So what I have before you is the LEA assurances. This is required in order for us to get our Title VI money, which is associated, the federal funds associated with IDEA. It equates to about $5.9 million. So in order to apply and get that money, I have to have the board's approval for these assurances. It assures that we will follow special education law and Kansas statutes and regulations. So the board item is here for you. I'll entertain any questions.
Comments? Action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item the Turner Library Quarterly Report as submitted by Carol Levers, director of libraries, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, superintendent of schools.
Good evening, Dr. Win, or Dr. Faust. I'm going to ask Andrea Durbin also to come up, in case you have additional questions. This report is required by the inter-local agreement between or amongst the USD 500, Turner Recreation Center, and the Wyandotte County Library Board. I think it's about ten years ago that we've signed, the Board of Education signed that inter-local agreement. And we have to make sure that we send a report every quarter. So this is the report for this quarter. So.
Any questions?
Any questions? So I guess my generic question is, there's no other requirement from than the Piper or the Edwardsville?
No. At the time when we had all three, before they, Turner had a library, they were all, they all fell under the unified, you know, the Wyandotte County Library Board. But ten years ago, when they decided they wanted a library, and Turner decided they will take care of the building, et cetera, that was part of the requirement in the MOU, just for that group. The others didn't require, you know, just monthly, when we have the board meeting for the Wyandotte County, we'll report to them, but not necessarily have a quarterly report. The other thing for Turner as well, they operate on a calendar here. So from January to December, unlike we would, first of July through end of June. So that, like, just a couple of weeks ago, they've already okayed the 1920 budget for Turner. And actually for all three, Wyandotte County for all three, that they're going to contribute to the Board of Education for the services for Piper and for Edwardsville. So it's already been set for next year.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question. The budget runs this, your expenditures, your 2019 expenditures run through, what's the, what's the, what's the period of time that those expenditures were incurred?
January.
January.
Through December.
Do so. Okay. You know, who prepares your budgets? Because I'm seeing, I'm looking, unless I'm looking at this one.
This is just first quarter. This is the first quarter for the fourth.
Oh, okay. All right, I got you. That's what I wanted to know, okay. You good?
Just need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you so much for the library staff, for the authors that you guys had last week or a couple of weeks ago. That was a really good program. The community really showed up. And I just appreciate you bringing in authors and things of that nature. Because my daughter, it's so good to see, you know, sometimes you'll read people books, but you never meet them and see the author. And my daughter was able to take pictures and read the book and got another one of her books from the library. And so it was just really good. So I want to thank you for all that you guys do to help bring programs, to allow the community to be able to really interact with people who they're reading about and seeing. So I really appreciate that.
And that's why I thought I'll do the handouts as well, to give you a heads up for, you know, future programs, especially with Emmett Till and the other home reads, home reads, to expose some of our local authors to the community and meet other authors as well.
And also, one more thing. I had a meeting down at the library off of Metropolitan, that one. And we had an event for an organization, and people, they encouraged their people to bring their children. And so while they were there, all the children, it was rows of them were lined up on the computer with the gas pass. That was so good to see that the openness of the library to see children on the computers, working through, I think it was ABC Mouse and other programs, because organizations are encouraged, bring your kids, family oriented. So that was really good to see.
When we receive, when we have all these meetings, especially community meetings, I mean, that is a problem for, to look for babysitting. And we kind of, we kind, when that happens, we have programs geared towards that, knowing that we're going to have fifty people or however many, but to bring the kids out and put them so that at least the adults can have their meeting. And then we do the babysitting.
Right, I really appreciate it. I didn't know that that existed. You know, sometimes you don't know about things until you need it. And I was like, that is so awesome that, you know.
Come and visit us often, you'll see much more of what we do in public libraries.
Oh, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So for the report? Want a question? Want to set aside? Right. Are you adding it or? What is it? Which number is it? H? Okay. We now are at the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item C.
C like cat?
To be discussed in executive session.
We have a request to pull item C as well as H and L. Any others? Okay, I need a motion, please, accept the consent agenda, minus, excuse me, minus C like cat, H like happy, L like, like Larry.
I'll make a move. Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion. C will go into executive session. H will discuss here thereafter, soon after, as well as L. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. H? Dr. Faust?
So the update, I'm not sure if I have the updated one. I gave my updates. I don't see the school listings, Sumner. Sumner's not in here. Sumner, and then we still have West, Middle, and they will be?
Soon as you said that, yes. I highlighted the other changes that are in the tabs, the bullying hotline, the social emotional. I will make notes for the, to remove, to add Sumner and remove.
Add Gloria Willis.
Yep, Gloria Willis, thank you.
Well, it's in here, sorry. And Gloria Willis is in here.
What page are you on, Dr. Faust?
On page?
Six.
Page six. I have Gloria Willis, but I need to make sure I have Sumner. Thank you.
And on page seven, we've removed West.
Thank you.
Is that Ms. Westfall? Not Ms. Faust. Page six, Gloria Willis is included. Page seven?
I just didn't strike through West on page seven.
Middle will? Is struck. Parker is struck on page eight. And what else you're adding?
Those were mine.
That's it?
West and Parker.
I have the strike through through Parker. I just needed to add the strike through through West.
Okay.
Yeah, so there.
I think that works. My question for number, item L?
So do you want to go ahead and approve that, then?
Excuse me. Yes. Motion, please, to approve corrections.
Who's the name with corrections? Don't move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. L, wanting to ask, what's the status of any other mold at any other school? Has it come to our attention? Do we need to have an inspection? All the above?
I am not aware of any, good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust. But I'm not aware of any other current mold issues. We do periodically get a request from the schools to investigate what they believe may be mold. When we do that, we'll send out our, we have an environmental, actually, he's asbestos inspector, but he's become our environmental inspector. And when deemed necessary, we will call in outside expert agency, industrial hygienist, to give us some guidance and have it inspected and tested, if necessary. But as of right now, I'm not aware of any other, not to say there won't be some tomorrow or later when the weather warms up, but we'll watch that and address it as they come up.
Correct. You said they had to call you, if I understood you correctly, if you got a phone call requesting?
On some of these areas, sometimes the custodians will bring it to us. Sometimes the teachers may have a concern. They see something in the corner they think may be. Or sometimes they just don't feel well. They have congestion or whatever. And so we'll be made aware of that, one way or the other, and get that tested.
So do we, we don't have a committee that, there's a list, a running list, where we check and go out and make sure that everything is okay?
No. Frankly, we assume everything's okay unless we've been, get some notification that there's a question otherwise. We regularly change our filters. We have our HVAC systems working. We do everything we can to, if we know there's an issue, say if there's a water issue in a school, we'll keep an eye on that and we'll take it, address that. But those issues are really pretty rare and few and far between.
While we're talking about repairs, I've been going to exercise over this building, and I noticed that there was a lot of stilts over there with wood.
There is. We're having issues with the, you've noticed the concrete of that building that we took back over just a few years ago, the concrete walkways. And we actually have a bid that's been prepared. We had a structural engineer help us with that to see what repairs we need to do to shore that all back up and stop that concrete from spalling and breaking off.
Okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, we had that up as a precaution, just to try to keep any little honk of concrete from falling at the inopportune time.
Okay, but it is being looked at.
It is absolutely being looked at.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did we go out to bid on those, on the mold remediation?
Typically, what we do, because it is treated as a high priority, kind of an emergency, you know, health and safety kind of thing, we will, we call in the inspector and get the testing done. And then we'll address that per their suggested remediation.
So we don't?
Typically, we do not, no. No, we have a, we have a series of four or five different qualified contractors that we'll call to come in, if it's not something that our people can take care of themselves. Right. And it typically is not of this kind of cost.
So has the dollar amount of that particular contract doesn't have any bearing on whether you come before us?
It typically would. Anything we, absolutely over $20,000. But in this case, because we wanted to get that particular issue addressed right now, there was some significant mold that we considered that a health and safety issue that we wanted to address as an emergency situation.
Under your board policy, you do have the superintendent has the authority in an emergency situation to exceed the expenditure authority subject to ratification by the board. And this was deemed, as I understood it, to be an emergency.
We did get four proposals from different contractors to look at that.
In some of our older buildings that we did not have new construction performed, have we tested for lead?
Yes, we actually go through a process. We, I would say randomly, but we do, in the water, I'm assuming you're talking about.
Correct.
Yes, we've done testing in the water. And frankly, we'll be going back out and putting that back out to test maybe some more this coming summer. But yeah, we do test those.
Okay. And where do we, where would one find the report on schools?
I can provide the reports. If we could get back on that, if you'd like, we do.
Just put in the library.
Okay.
That would be the easiest.
All right.
Because there is a, we're not Flint, Michigan, but there is a problem in Kansas.
Right. Yeah, you know, fortunately, we've been, and I will say we've been fortunate. Now, I won't say that we've not ever found anything. And typically, what we found is some of the, we'll find a random faucet on a hand sink that maybe hasn't, you know, been used. that maybe hasn't, you know, been used for years. And we'll take that out of, out of service or make whatever necessary repairs. But it's been pretty rare that we find that kind of a situation.
In the water fountains?
Yeah, we test the water fountains, too, yes, absolutely.
And for lead paint?
And for lead paint, yes.
Okay.
We've actually gone through a process, really with the board of having a lot of, the board, the bond,
Right.
some of those issues tested and checked.
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Therefore, I would make a motion to approve L.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second, approve, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. Payment of bills? Questions?
I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. Before we go into executive session, let's take about a three-minute break. Five minutes, come on, three, you can do it in three minutes. Five minutes. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out, and we will resume at 7:22.